I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of April 21st, 2015. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. First order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak at this time?
Yes, we have requests to speak. Did you want to do the invocation and report of councilmembers?
No, you're not.
Why, I was just really in a hurry here. Thought it was going a little fast. Invocation will be given by Pastor Greg Bertinet of the Grace Baptist Church.
Thank you. Let us pray. God Almighty, we come to you again and ask your blessing on this meeting concerning the business of our city, Santa Maria, California. We ask for wisdom to understand the needs and the challenges before us. We ask for courage to do what we must for the good of all in this community. We ask for strength and perseverance, as doing the right thing is never easy or quick. And Lord, we are met right now with little water. Please send us rain. This is one of our most important concerns before us is how to steward the water you have given us. May we as citizens and we as a community be wise in our usage and may the rate increases spur us on to better conservation. We are also recognizing in April a serious lack of affordable housing in our community. I praise you that we on the CDBG Committee have helped toward this effort of providing such housing and ask that you would give us sacrificial hearts to offer more, as you have given us those who can provide such assistance. And lastly, Father, I ask that you would bless the efforts of the nonprofits here in town and give them an increased ability to help the helpless, to bless the fatherless, and to give aid to the neediest of our community. Bless us so that we may be a blessing, and we will give you all the praise for your grace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to reconvene the meeting, call the meeting to order. City Attorney Traheal, could you please give us a report on the closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council held two closed sessions under the Brown Act for Real Property and litigation exceptions, and there is no reportable action for both items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Traheal. Our first order of business this evening is the Library Volunteer of the Month, and Councilmember Boyson will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my pleasure to award the Library Volunteer of the Month to Margaret Cooper. Margaret is an active volunteer who has contributed thousands of hours promoting literacy and supporting library programs. If she isn't swimming at the Paul Nelson Aquatic Center, traveling the world, or writing her memoirs, you will most likely find her volunteering at the library. As a retired Rigetti High School Resource Specialist and Allen Hancock Adult Education Teacher of Sewing and Art, Margaret has put her skills to good use. She is an English tutor for Central Coast Literacy Council and has served on the Library Art Committee since 2008. As a former Disney artist, Margaret's perspective and skill in evaluating art submissions for display in Shepherd Hall has undoubtedly contributed to the library's recognition by the Santa Maria Sun as the best place to view art in northern Santa Barbara County last year. Over the last 18 years, Margaret has served on the Library Board of Trustees, meeting monthly to discuss library policies and important issues brought about by our community's changing needs. Her life and work experience, combined with her objective and caring disposition, make her a valued member of the board. Her sage advice shows a depth of understanding about complex issues and compassion for the public we serve. Margaret has proven herself to be tireless supporter and volunteer for the Santa Maria Public Library. We are thankful and proud to designate Margaret Cooper as Volunteer of the Month for April 2015.
Thank you very much for this honor. It's been a real privilege to be able to serve on the Library Board and to meet such wonderful people, wonderful librarian and trustees. So I really feel that it's been a privilege for me, and so I want to thank you very much for this honor.
Ms. Housel, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Patino. I just want to say that Margaret is well-known in many segments of our community as a caring and giving individual and volunteer who's made a difference in so many people's lives. She volunteers at Central Coast Literacy as a tutor and is helping somebody learn English, and she's one of the most interesting and inspiring people that I know. In fact, she told me that she gave a speech today at the Seroptimus Club in San Luis Obispo. So she's very active in many ways. And as a new librarian in Santa Maria, Margaret reached out to me with invitations to join some of our local organizations and social groups that I have since stayed involved with, and my life is really richer for knowing Margaret, and I really thank you for that, Margaret.
The next item is a proclamation, and Councilmember O'Rourke will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the City of Santa Maria, Santa Maria, California proclamation. Whereas the City of Santa Maria recognizes that the United States Congress has enacted Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988, as the directive for fair housing. And whereas fair housing laws, as outlined by said acts, guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunities for all residents of the United States regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability, or familial status. And whereas the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development has declared the month of April 2015 as Fair Housing Month. And whereas the City of Santa Maria maintains citywide displays of housing information materials printed in both English and Spanish languages concerning fair housing legislation and describing the procedure for lodging housing discrimination complaints. And whereas the County of Santa Barbara Home Consortium members, including the County of Santa Barbara and the cities of Santa Maria, Lompoc, Carpinteria, Solvang, Bilton, Colita, have completed the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice required as a part of the consolidated plan submission. And whereas the City of Santa Maria has contracted with the Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara County to perform random testing of fair housing practices of landlords and property managers, review local newspapers for evidence of housing discrimination, assist in resolving discrimination disputes through litigation or referral, make presentations to Santa Maria Adult Education Classes regarding rights of single parents and ethnic minorities to equal housing opportunities, and conduct community workshops to educate landlords and property managers regarding fair housing. I have to take a deep breath there. Now, therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Santa Maria, and express the hope that this observance will assist in the continuance of equal housing opportunities for all residents of Santa Maria. And accepting this is Melora Vada-Vadna. I hope that was right. And along with her is Teri Vice and Villegas, pardon me, and Elizabeth Diaz. Come on down.
My name is Melora Vadna, and I'm the Executive Director of the Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara County. With me is Elizabeth Diaz tonight. She is our family violence managing attorney and works with me in Santa Barbara. We've been up here today with a grant review in our office earlier. That's why Elizabeth is here tonight. Thank you, Mayor Patino, and councilmembers, for passing this important resolution, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you briefly tonight. At one time and in some places, discrimination in housing meant being forced to live only in certain neighborhoods. I come from the South, so I know that is a very true statement in many places even today. But today in Santa Barbara County, we have an all-time low rental housing vacancy rate, meaning that rental housing is now almost as scarce as water. And people who are discriminated against when they're looking for housing, because of their race, their disability, their religion, sexual orientation, or any other arbitrary characteristic, they likely do not face fewer choices of places to live. They may face having no place to live with a rent that they can afford. The Legal Aid Foundation began in 1959, the same year that California passed its first Fair Housing Act. And from the beginning, our founders recognized housing as a basic human need that should be protected by civil law when unlawfully threatened. Housing is still a main part of our work, along with family violence, and in 2014, we assisted over 150 low-income households in the city of Santa Maria alone who were being evicted or whose unit was grossly substandard or who were facing discrimination. Legal Aid is proud to partner with the City of Santa Maria and other nonprofits and other cities and the county to ensure that all of our residents are treated fairly when searching for and maintaining housing. We just finished last Friday our fair housing testing that we did here in the city of Santa Maria and in Lompoc, and I'm happy to say that so far, we don't have a lot of evidence of overt discrimination that we were able to target or find. But what we did find is that most of our people could find no place that would even say they had an open unit. So we think right now that is a huge problem. So, thank you very much.
The next item is another proclamation, and Councilmember Zuniga will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas since its inception over 135 years ago by founder J. Sterling Morton, Arbor Day is celebrated in all 50 states and is a day dedicated to highlighting the important role trees play in our society while encouraging tree conservation. And whereas by educating children in our community, the City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department is working to ensure Arbor Day remains an important day for future generations. And whereas the City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department has partnered with the Natural History Museum to provide educational activities that will inform children of the many benefits trees provide, as well as present the history of Arbor Day. And whereas continuing a 34-year tradition, the City of Santa Maria is honored to be recognized as a Tree City USA for continuing to promote the many valuable benefits trees provide and the dedication to properly care for all city trees. And whereas City of Santa Maria residents are invited to celebrate and take part in the holiday by planting trees that provide clean air and beautify the community, now therefore Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes Saturday, April 25th, 2015, as Arbor Day in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to plant trees and set an example to younger generations by acknowledging the important role trees play in our city. And accepting this on behalf of the Recreation and Parks Department is Roy Teniente.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation on behalf of the Recreation and Parks Department. I'd just like to let everybody know that we do take our duty as urban forests very seriously, and we do our utmost to educate the generations regarding the benefits of trees and their usefulness. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Roy. Now, we'll hear from Councilmember Waterfield, who will be presenting the final proclamation for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas California's 400 family strawberry farmers created 70,000 jobs and grow nearly 90% of the strawberries consumed in the United States, including 10 million flats from the Santa Maria Valley alone, and whereas strawberry farming takes place on fewer than 40,000 acres in California and generates over $100 million in annual tax revenue supporting local, state, and regional government services, and whereas strawberries are rich in vitamin C and offers a refreshing alternative to sugary snacks, and whereas the Santa Maria Strawberry Festival will be held April 24th through the 26th of this year, and whereas the Santa Maria Valley is well-known for its famous Santa Maria-style barbecues and luscious strawberries. And whereas the opening day of Strawberry Festival will be Senior Day, celebrating everyone 62 years and older with free admission. Now, therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize the week of April 20th through the 26th, 2015, as Strawberry Week in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages residents to attend the 2015 Santa Maria Valley Strawberry Festival. And here to receive the proclamation is Mr. Fidel Sandoval.
I want to thank God first, and the City Council, and the mayor. I've been asking different councilmembers for 20 years for this, and I've seen the light today.
See, you finally asked some women.
Yes, but I was gonna say that. Alice Patino called me mayor last week, and so I complained to her, and she goes, "If you want something done, ask a woman." From now on, I know who to ask. So thank you so much, and enjoy the berries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. Now, I ask all you women out there, isn't that true? The next order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given; however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not otherwise printed on the agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form.
Madam Clerk, do we have any?
We have four.
We have four. No other requests we accepted after this time. And then could you set the timer for three minutes? Dave Cross, followed by Mike Cordero, followed by Tara Presley, followed by Lawrence Shinderman. Good evening, Mr. Cross.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm the Economic Development Director at the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to take a moment to update you on some of the things we're doing on that front. Last Wednesday, we had a very successful Vandenberg Air Force Base Small Business Outreach Event at the Fair Park. It was open to all businesses and organizations at no cost. We had over 300 registrants from local and outside the area. They were there to learn how to do business with the base and with the government. We also had over 60 display tables in the convention center represented by businesses and agencies. It's a great event that grows every year, and it's because of our relationship with Vandenberg Air Force Base. A few weeks ago, we presented our results, the results of the Business Confidence Survey that we had. We had over 240 businesses respond, and it was all about the Santa Maria economy, and we provided the results. The vast majority of businesses are optimistic. As a matter of fact, over 41% of the responders to the survey said they will be looking at hiring over the next 12 months, and that's why we're sponsoring a major regional job fair later this year. We've also been continuing our tours and forums. That's to raise awareness of manufacturing and industry. So far this year, we've toured Lineage Logistics, the 200,000-square-foot cooling facility on West La Brea. We've toured images screen printing, a local small business here in Santa Maria. And last month, we heard a presentation from the Santa Maria Valley Railroad. And we also heard about employee-owned companies like Hardy Diagnostics. And as far as working directly with businesses and companies interested in Santa Maria, we continue to do that. As a matter of fact, we often work directly with community development and the city manager's office. And we're sponsoring the Veterans Academy starting next week. We are connecting local veterans with employers. So I could go on about some of the things that we do on a day-to-day basis, but those are a few of the highlights. But I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council, for your confidence and support in the chamber to do economic development work. Frankly, without that support and funding, these programs would not be possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cross. And that looked like to be a great event, and so many people there, and I don't know how many, was it about 400 or so?
Yes, we had a terrific response. Every year it grows, and so our local companies, as well as companies outside the area, are interested in Vandenberg. It's the largest economic driver in Santa Barbara County.
So when you say out of the area, I think there was people from Fresno there and Sacramento.
We did, but we also had people out of state that came here. They all recognize the value of doing business with Vandenberg.
Thank you.
But we want to open that up to our local businesses.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cross. Mr. Cordero, did you want to speak on the CDBG, or did you want to speak now?
I'll speak now, Mayor, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Okay. My name is Mike Cordero. I live here in Santa Maria, and I've been on the Board of Directors for five years for CAC, a position that I assumed and accepted as a result of my affiliation with the council. We were disappointed to hear that CAC's Healthy Senior Lunch Program was not recommended by CDBG funding, but that's only a small piece of why we're here. And I want to stress the fact that we're not angry at this. We just think that it's just something that happened, and that's the way it is. CAC is filled with what we call in CAC as categorical funds in our budget. Here in the council, you refer to them as restricted funds. So a very large part of our funding is not convertible. We can't take it from this fund and put it in this fund, like you can't take the roadway funds and build a house with it. So we're stuck. We don't know yet what we're going to do. We're going to keep playing with it and seeing what we can do to make some changes. But the bottom line is that we're not going to be able to provide, at this point in time, the 3,200 meals we had planned on providing, and that means that about 350 low-income, vulnerable seniors are not going to have their hunger pains addressed by CAC. We just don't have the money. Our money has to be spent on those things that are there. So Fran, who's here this evening, was very specific in saying that we certainly don't want to come here and scream and holler and stamp our feet and be angry and mad and say things that are unnecessary. More than that, we want to say things that we believe will help to educate, and that part I've already done, is to let you know that our funds are just not there, that we don't have them. Like I said, I don't know what we're going to do, and neither does Fran, but we're going to do something to try to address these 350 people that are in our community, our community, yours, mine, all of ours, to see what we can do to do that. And we hope that this bit of education will help in the future with deciding what we're going to do with this money. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Tara Presley, followed by Lawrence Shinderman. Good evening, Tara.
Good evening. So my name's Tara Presley, and I am the Event Director for an organization called Unity and Community, and will be having our second annual event, I'm very pleased to announce, on May 9th. And it's a per walk down the parade route of Broadway, concluding at the Fair Park. The focus is on drugs, violence, and gang-related activity in the community. And so everybody's welcome to participate, but we will be focusing on those areas of, you know, praying for our community. At the end, we'll be coming together with a time where we're going to have resource vendors, so it's bringing together the whole community, all the resources that are used to effectuate the change, so substance providers, different nonprofits, so that the community can become more educated on what is out there and see how we can all work together for their common good of seeing an improvement in the quality of life in our community. So the hope is that if people come that need services, they can get connected, and then also those that are coming that, you know, want to be a part of the solution, they just don't know what to do, how to get involved, they can become more familiarized with the great programs and resources that we do have, and start volunteering, start financially supporting them. So we're just really excited about it and really very much appreciate the support of the City of Santa Maria, Mayor Patino, Councilwoman Zuniga's on our committee, our law enforcement, Chief Martin, and Chief Orr, City Manager Hayden, and whole council. I know I saw a lot of you guys out there last year, too, and so for those of you that are new, I want to extend a formal invite. So, thank you very much.
And Ms. Presley, could you please arrange for the same weather we had last year?
It rained. It poured, and as people were walking down the walk, they were just cheering. They were cheering more. And if I could add, you know, last year, being a first annual event in the rain, we were really happy to see such a great turnout. At any given time, there were about 700 people at the Fair Park, and security said about 1,000 showed up. So this year, we're anticipating having a larger turnout now that people know more about the event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shinderman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Lawrence Shinderman. I'm a member of the Mesa Refinery Watch Group. Towns and communities along the main line of the Union Pacific Railroad, including Oakland, San Luis Obispo, San Jose, Santa Cruz, Santa Barbara, Monterey, Carpentera, Camarilla, and Ventura, have stepped up and said no to the proposed Phillips 66 crude-by-rail terminal project that's scheduled to be built in Nupomo. The reason is to stop what the press has called bomb trains that will be coming through their communities. This opposition is not political grandstanding. This is an issue of what has been called crude-by-rail roulette. The citizens of Santa Maria and the surrounding communities must be made aware of the terror that will be coming up and down the tracks five times a week should this intrusive, dangerous, and polluting rail project be built. If they build it, the trains will come, and come they will, blighting the landscape, spewing toxic diesel emissions, and putting at risk the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and visitors to Santa Maria. Some will say the trains have already come through town. What's the big deal? Well, the big deal is the type of crude that these trains will be carrying. It's called tar sands. It's a highly viscous substance, tar-like substance extracted from the Alberta tar sands. It's the dirtiest, most toxic, and polluting crude oil there is. What's more, it's highly volatile and explosive. People say, "Who says so?" Well, the Railway Age Magazine says so, an industry trade publication. They said, "The widespread belief that tar sands from Alberta's Northern Oil Sands is far safer to transport by rail than Bakken," Bakken was on the original, what they call EIR, "is for all intents and purposes dead wrong." The chief of public safety at a town meeting in Guadalupe, just up the road, was more graphic when he stated that "in the event of an explosion, a shockwave and blast zone would cover 1.5 miles. Rail cars could be launched like projectiles into the air. Debris field of shrapnel will spread 3,000 feet, and evacuation zone of a mile will be ordered." Visualize how this would impact the vistas of Santa Maria if a toxic plume was carried by the winds, and how would it impact tourism, commerce, and industry? In fact, the Department of Transportation projects that there will be 10, 10 such deadly explosions every year for the next 20 years. Why take that risk? In conclusion, I would ask that the Town of Santa Maria add your voice to the growing opposition to this project. If the Slow Planning Commission rejects the rail project, these bomb trains will not come through Santa Maria. Again, if you don't build it, they won't come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, could I ask the City Manager a question? This is the first I'm hearing of this. Is this something planned to come through on Santa Maria Railroad?
Thank you, Mayor Boyson. Councilmember Boyson, members of the City Council. I did talk to a couple gentlemen from Nupomo regarding this item. We also checked with We also checked with the Santa Maria Valley Railroad District. The rail lines that they would be using if, in fact, any of these rail cars came south of Nupomo would not come through Santa Maria. They would use the rail line that would take from the Nupomo Mesa, go through Highway 1, out through Long Poak, and down south from there. So no rail cars would be coming within the jurisdiction of the city of Santa Maria. That's why we have not placed this item on the council's agenda. As a reminder, as far as past practice is concerned, we place items in front of the city council for action that has, within the jurisdiction of the city limits. For example, we had Measure P. That was a county-wide issue. We did not bring that before the city council. That was on the oil drilling, the fracting measure, very highly controversial. However, we chose not to take a stance on it because it did not impact within the jurisdiction of the city limits. Also, Measure M, which was the county roads maintenance, another major issue within Santa Barbara County, but it did not come within the jurisdiction of the city of Santa Maria.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendars are approved by roll-call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Council members have items they wish to pull for discussion? Item D? Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D.
Okay. It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Orrak?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Abstain.
Except D.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
We're keeping you on your toes.
Move for approval of the consent calendar, item D.
It's been moved in second to approve item D.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Orrak?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Abstain.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. I almost said abstain.
Okay. Next to Order of Business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will conduct a public hearing to determine whether a majority protest exists, and if no majority protest exists, introduce an ordinance approving annual 5% water and sewer rate increases for the next three years effective July 1st, beginning 2015.
The staff report will be made by Utilities Director, Mr. Springer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable Council. Tonight, you're holding a public hearing for the proposed water and sewer rate increases for the next three years. As a matter of background, the city council has committed to high-quality state water in the late '70s to early '80s, and has provided for annual water and sewer rate increases since 1981. Each fiscal year, the utilities and administrative services departments evaluate the long-term health of the water resources funds, these include both water and wastewater, to analyze the rate structures and provide recommendations to city council. During the last fiscal year, the city conducted such a comprehensive evaluation with the goal to evaluate the long-term health of the water resources funds, analyze existing fee structures, and recommend needs for the future and improve the soundness of the water resources funds. Some of the operations covered, here's a snapshot of some of the operations for the sewer and water system. The sewer system itself has over 220 miles of pipes, one lift station, and a capacity of 13.5 million gallons a day at the wastewater treatment plant. To put that in perspective, that's 3.2 billion gallons a year treated out at the wastewater treatment plant. On the water side, we serve over 101,000 citizens of the city of Santa Maria through over 300 miles of water line with an annual demand of about 13,000 acre feet. Some of the fiscal challenges dealing with a system such as this is to sustain efficient and compliant operations. We are regulated by a number of organizations to ensure that we meet our permitting requirements from safe drinking water standards, as well as discharge requirements at the wastewater treatment plant. So our goal is to manage and operate the system as efficiently as possible, including day-to-day operations, planning for expansion, and completing maintenance and repair projects. It is important to maintain the infrastructure to reduce the chances of catastrophic failure. Catastrophic failures are expensive and a waste of an important water resource. I'm sure all of you have seen recent pictures of waterline failures in Los Angeles where there was water rolling out of Poly Pavilion down there. That one leak alone caused $8 million, 8 million gallons to go down the drain. Put that in perspective, city customers use about 12 million gallons a day. So almost an entire day's worth of water for the city of Santa Maria in that one catastrophic failure. City staff has gone through significant efforts to reduce expenses to the water and sewer funds. These include active inspections, verification of pipe integrity for water main replacements. Instead of simply going by age of a water line to determine if it needs to be replaced, we take a look at the quality of the pipe whenever there is an opportunity. If someone goes out to tap a water main, we take a look at the piece that's left, to look at the strength and integrity of the steel to determine if it's a line that might need to be replaced. We also keep track of where leaks happen and waterline failures. Our water sewer service lines, our water line repairs, we are working on putting anodes on those copper service lines to provide a sacrificial way for the copper to continue to provide water without corroding and causing us leaks, which are expensive to repair as well. We have some operational efficiencies dealing with the fixed base meter reading, where we have meters that through constant communication with communication towers tell us how the water meters are being read. We do preventive maintenance and repairs of the sewer system. This includes jet rotting to clean those lines to prevent overflows, as well as manhole relining to prevent sewer overflows. So after going through the reductions that we can go through on projects, we have projected expenditures. Part of the debt service that we have for state water, as well as state water, and combined on this chart to include state water, operations are on here, as well as capital. Some significant expenditures that we deal with, I'm sorry, on this slide, there is... Anyway, you get to see the broad chart. I do apologize. I'm not sure what happened there. In the top part of the chart there, the dark blue, if you can't read it where you're at, is the operating. The light blue is the capital. Dark gray is state water, and light gray is debt service. So you can see more than half of the annual expenses are related to operating expenses for the system, as well as state water. So the city went through various options in the pro forma that I described earlier, where we put together all of the projected revenues and expenditures. One of the options we looked at was no increase. This scenario resulted in a cash balance declining to below zero after fiscal year 1617. We also evaluated a scenario when and what size of rate increase would be required in the future if no rate increase was instituted right away. This scenario resulted in a 20% increase in fiscal year 1617, and also decreased the cash balance to near zero. In addition, this would provide for a much larger single-year increase than the proposed 5% increase. The proposed 5% increase allows the city to maintain sufficient revenue to operate the city's water and sewer system, pay for costs associated with state water delivery, and maintain existing infrastructure. To continue operating the water and sewer systems, minimize future utility rate increases, and improve the soundness of the water resource funds, the city proposes implementing this 5% increase each year for the next three years. If approved, the city would implement those starting July 1st of this year. So based on our evaluation and our recommendation for a 5% increase, the city needed to go through the Prop 218 process. This includes notice, which went out in the January billings. The notices, consistent with Prop 218 requirements, describe the proposed water and sewer rate increases. And then we also held public workshops to discuss the proposals, get feedback from ratepayers, and to provide answers to questions that people may have. Provided that the city council this evening does not receive greater than a 50% protest from ratepayers, this public hearing is the final step before action by city council. As of today, we have received two official protests regarding this rate increase of the over 20,000 accounts served by the city. Also in compliance with Proposition 218, this proposed rate increase does not exceed the anticipated cost to operate the water and sewer systems, pay for costs associated with state water, or to retire bonds. So what would the proposed 5% rate increase look for the typical family in Santa Maria? Using a 3/4-inch meter and 15 units of water each month, they would see a combined water and sewer rate increase of 3.79 each month. This equates to 2 cents increase per gallon for both water and sewer. Water customers are charged a flat rate based on the size of the water meter serving the property. In addition to the flat water rate, city water customers are charged a variable rate for the amount of water used each month. This billing system reflects the fixed or flat cost incurred to serve a customer through a meter, as well as the variable cost to supply increasing amounts of water to a customer. Sewer charges are based on a flat rate for residential customers and a variable rate for commercial users. The variable rate depends on the type of business due to the actual discharge into the wastewater treatment plant. So with a proposed 5% rate increase, how would the city of Santa Maria compare to other communities in the area, based on a combined water and sewer rate of those in the area?
Are you recusing yourself now?
I'll be stepping down after we discuss, as I understand, we're going to discuss the home capital program first.
Okay, great.
As soon as we finish that, I'll be stepping down.
Okay, staff report is to be made by Community Programs Manager, Ms. Quayle Hudson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Before we start, may we have our grant specialist, Rosie Naras, announce to the audience if anyone needs translation services?
Certainly. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is the annual public hearing to consider the block grants advisory committee's recommendation for the allocation of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnerships Program Funds for fiscal year 201516. Both of these programs are administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Before I begin with the rest of the staff report, our committee chairperson, Rosely Marquez, and quite a few members of our block grants advisory committee are here this evening, and I'd like them to stand and be recognized. And Chairperson Marquez would like to make a few comments.
Good evening, Ms. Marquez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. It gives me an honor to be here tonight because it gives me the opportunity to publicly acknowledge and thank your staff and special projects, Celeste, Rosie, and Alicia for the hard work that they do and the dedication they provide us with all the documentation and materials. They gave us the guidance and direction that we needed, and if we didn't have them with all this information, I don't think we could do the job we did. But as you have been recognized, our advisory committee here tonight, it was very difficult this year because we had many applications in the public service and in capital. And I know that we feel bad, our committee members feel bad, that we could not fund everyone that we fund over many years. It's because it was very competitive. We came in with an open mind, being practical, being fair and impartial, looking at the HUD's regulation, look at the city council's priorities, looking at the survey, the needs in the community. This is how we had to determine our decision. And we did the best we could, and I hope that you welcome our decision, but it was very difficult this year. Some of our committee members said they have never worked so hard in their life. So I just want to say thank you very much for having us as being your advisory committee, and we did the best we could this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was somewhat of a complicated process this year, which we had to continue the public hearing, and I'll get into that in my report. The CDBG program was created back in 1974 and provides local governments with grant funds to address a variety of physical, economic, and social needs in the community. And the city has been participating as an entitlement grantee since the first year of funding in 1975, and receives an annual formula-based grant. The CDBG program is probably the only federal program that allows local discretion as to how the funds may be used to best meet the needs of the community, provided the city's activities comply with federal regulations and one of the three national objectives, in particular, primary benefit to low and moderate income persons. Over the years, the city has used CDBG funds for a variety of projects and programs, city public facilities such as Abel Maldonado Youth Center, the Santa Maria Public Library, renovations of various parks and recreation facilities, ADA work, street improvements, construction and rehabilitation of nonprofit facilities, public services, residential rehabilitation, economic development loans, commercial facade improvements, and acquisition of property and site improvements in support of affordable housing. The city has also been participating in the home program since its inception in 1995 as a subrecipient to the county and a member of a countywide consortium. The county serves as the lead agency and the fiscal agent for the consortium. The reason that the city originally joined the consortium was that we could not qualify on our own at that time. The consortium receives an annual grant from HUD and then distributes the funding to consortium members based on a formula that includes population, overcrowded housing, and level of poverty. As the name suggests, home funds must be used for affordable housing activities for low and moderate income households. Over the years, the city has used the home funds primarily for homebuyer assistance, new housing construction of affordable housing, and tenant-based rental assistance. Recently, the city has requested to become a direct entitlement grantee, and we are awaiting HUD's decision. This item will be discussed at the May 19th council meeting. As far as funding, HUD has notified the city that it will receive $1,329,004 in CDBG funding. This is a 4% increase over this year's amount. Of this amount, 20% or $265,800 can be used for general administration, 15% or $199,350 can be used for public services, and $863,854 will be available for capital projects. Concerning home funds, for fiscal year 201516, the county estimates that the city's allocation will be $199,107. Over the past several years, the home program budget has been reduced at the federal level by about 50%. So consequently, the city's allocation has been reduced significantly. The city does not receive any administrative funds from the county to manage our local home projects or programs. The council-appointed block grants advisory committee oversees the annual allocation process that involves assessing needs in the community, developing funding priorities, reviewing funding applications, conducting site visits, and making recommendations for allocation. The committee conducted a community needs meeting on October 13th, and in addition, staff prepared and distributed electronically and also in hard copy form a needs assessment survey, and that was done last fall. And we actually received 600 responses, and those were tabulated. Also, the committee was advised... Also, the committee was advised of the City Council's 2014-16 citywide goals to shift more CDBG capital funds into fundamental city facilities and improvements in infrastructure, such as the Oakley Park and Buena Vista Park projects. Two years ago, the committee also received direction from the council to amend the city's number-one priority to include programs and projects that serve at-risk youth and provide more funding to youth activities. After reviewing all of this input, the committee adopted the priorities with no changes from the previous two years. So as shown on the overhead, those are prevent homelessness, address critical emergency, at-risk youth, and special needs populations, expand educational and youth development opportunities, provide affordable housing, and expand economic opportunities. As Chairperson Marquez said, this year's process was very competitive. We had 48 applications received as compared to 38 last year. The 48 applications received included one home application for $250,000, 16 CDBG capital requests totaling $1.7 million, and 31 public service applications totaling $425,000. As part of the process, the committee divided into five teams and conducted site visits and in-depth reviews of each proposal. In addition, each team was provided with a binder of complete financial statements, tax returns, and audit information that was pertinent to each applicant. Before deliberations, the committee also, in some cases, if there was something lacking in the application, they requested additional information from the applicants, and they prepared written team reports. Each team reported their findings to the entire committee, and that was at a special meeting held on March 9, and then they formulated their recommendation for City Council approval. However, subsequently, after receiving, we received a notice from the county after March 9 that our home allocation was actually being reduced. We originally estimated that it would be about $250,000, and it was reduced to $199,000. So the committee met again on March 26 to revisit their recommendation for both CDBG capital and home allocations. This was necessary due to the reduced amount of home funding, and the project that they were recommending funding under home was the Housing Trust Fund Workforce Home Buyer Program. The Housing Trust Fund informed us they would not be able to proceed with their program unless they had received more funding. They basically needed about $400,000, so they would not be able to accept the allocation. So the committee adopted a revised recommendation that is outlined on the summaries. That is Attachment D in your report, and we're going to project those overhead. We suggest that the public comment and council discussion be done for each category of funding, starting with the home projects first. And I'll give a brief little report for each pot of money, and then you can take public comment discussion and take action on that specific category of funding. So we'll start with home. Under home, the committee recommended shifting $199,107 in funding for the People Self-Help Housing Senior Affordable Apartment Project, so shifting it from where it was being funded under CDBG capital over to home. This project will provide 40 apartments for seniors to be located at 624 East Camino Coleco, and additional funding is not needed for the TBRA program at this time. So that was really the only project that really could qualify under home, to be funded under home. If you have any questions about the home program or the home recommendation, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions from the council?
The only question regarding TBRA, the need isn't there. We have excess funds at this time.
Yes.
Sufficient funds.
As a matter of fact, we started the program up again late last year with a $60,000 allocation, and actually, we'll be coming to you at the May 5 meeting for a contract for $250,000, I believe it is. So we have enough funding for the next two years.
Okay.
And so what we're asking for, well, it's under CDBG, so I guess I can't discuss that.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Mr. Waterfield?
Okay, so we're allocating the $199 to the People Self-Help Housing, which is great. A question for the Life Steps Foundation Wisdom Center, which is a senior daycare, that doesn't, that's not being considered as a home because it's, they come and go.
It wouldn't qualify for home.
Okay.
Home is actually, you know, housing, right. Residential.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence regarding the home programs funds?
I have no written communications.
I'd like to open up the public hearing regarding the home funds. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak?
One.
Okay, and this is in favor. Morgan Benavido.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, members of the City Council. I'm Morgan Benavido with People Self-Help Housing. Just wanted to say thank you to staff and to the committee for going through this difficult process of choosing projects based on limited funding. It seems to be a difficult task every year, getting harder and harder. This project that you see here is the senior apartments that actually approved a zone change just a couple of weeks ago. Just wanted to say thank you and offer up myself to answer any questions about this project and/or after-school program, which is on the CDBG side. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boyson?
Morgan, if I could, it probably would help for the press to the council. As I understand it, you are required, or you require this funding to qualify for your tax credit financing?
It's part of the financing scheme. The tax credit program requires us to basically leverage local public funds, or even state and federal, before we go to the tax credit program. This is one of the programs that is really kind of a mainstay for affordable housing. Now that RDA is dissolved, the home program has a lot of pressure on it.
So I'm thinking, my point is that People Self-Help will be able to leverage these funds many, many times to provide low-income senior housing for our community, which is just great.
That's correct. It's about a 20% to 30% ratio of public investment, and will then attract private investment to the community. It all depends on the finances, but somewhere around 20%, 30% will be public, and the rest will be private. It's a great leveraging source because that money comes from a large bank, for example, maybe a Chase or a Bank of America, will then pour millions of dollars into Santa Maria, will hire local contractors, and so it's a great benefit. Not only did you get the housing, which is a long-term asset, it's going to sit there as affordable for many years, but you also get the economic benefit as well.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the council or questions? I'd like to bring this close of public hearing regarding the home funds and bring this back to the council. Any discussion or emotion?
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve Resolution Number 2015-32 specifically directed towards the Home Investment Partnership Program.
I second. So moved in second to approve 2015-32. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino, I'll recuse myself for the rest of the hearing.
Thank you. Continuing on with the capital projects portion of this agenda item, Ms. Quelo Hudson, please continue.
Yes. Under CDBG capital, the committee recommended three city programs, projects. The first being $50,000 is recommended for allocation to the city's commercial facade rebate program, and this will be focused on the downtown area and the Main and Broadway corridors. $90,000 to the city's public alley improvement project on South Railroad. $133,084 for the city's Manami parking lot rehab project. Also, $82,953 is recommended to continue Capslo's minor home repair program that primarily assists disabled and seniors and very low-income, both owners and renters. This has been a great resource for our office to refer people for these improvements. And also, $15,000 for TBRA administration. We use the home funding for the TBRA security deposit or rental assistance utility deposit, but we're not allowed to use home funds to actually administer the program. We are allowed to use CDBG capital funds to administer the home TBRA program. In addition, under the nonprofit facilities program, $52,500 is recommended for improvements to the Boys and Girls Club Kitchen. There was a condition on that, that they must provide three bids by June 30, and otherwise, they will come back to you for action on that. $84,910 is recommended for Good Samaritan Shelter's Family Transitional Shelter restroom project that was considered to be a health and safety issue. $203,776 was recommended for the Life Steps Foundation for their new Wisdom Center project. This is the adult daycare, and they work primarily with people afflicted with dementia and Alzheimer's-related disorders. $151,631 is recommended to People Self-Help Housing for the senior affordable housing project. So that's in addition to the home allocation. So they have a split allocation between CDBG and home, and that's okay. We can do that, and it will be used for acquisition of the property. In addition, staff recommended, and the committee approved, the allocation of project delivery costs. This is approximately 5%, totaling $42,442, which has been distributed amongst the capital projects, not the city programs or projects, but the other subrecipient projects, to cover certain costs specific to the project. For example, we can charge engineering, architectural, if we're contracting out the federal environmental review, things like that, escrow costs, whatever, is specific to that project. And this is, of course, allowed under the CDBG regulations. So that concludes that part of my report. If you have any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Actually, yeah, I would like to make, I guess, a comment. A lot of communities take all of their Community Development Block Grant funding and basically improve whatever overall on city facilities for the most part. And, you know, we for years have given the 15%, dedicated 15% of our Community Development Block Grant funds for the services that are provided by the myriad of needs by our nonprofits. And I'm just putting this out because there's one, I think, critical need that wasn't funded. How's that? And it's the code-compliance weekend person. And I'll say why that is. Basically because on weekends, we're kind of a standstill, and I know that the code-enforcement people have an interaction with homeless and other things like that that are happening in your neighborhood and my neighborhood that is not addressed for the benefit of the entire community. And I think in a lot of cases, that's allowing us to educate the public that maybe they shouldn't be doing that on their property, or you shouldn't be harassing someone at their property or in the business section. And so from that aspect, I'm going to direct Rick because I, this is a hot button, I think, for the community because on weekends and the homeless population in this community, and you all see in service those particular people, that some way, shape, or form, we need to help address those issues to help them on weekends. And it's, you know, we're failing in that situation, and so I would direct staff some way, shape, or form that at least that program or something else. And I went to the 3CH meeting here a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking in relationship to our walk and talk in the business section, and that was one critical issue that the business people were saying they, you know, particularly on weekends when they know no one's going to come around, and we've got beat officers that we just can't take off of, off the street to go and to try to intervene with business owners that are having problems with homeless or whoever might be out there. So I think this is one area, we missed it on this particular go-round of, you know, CDG money, but I'm directing you. How's that? California nod, please. But anyway, thank you, everyone, for the job you did on.
Mr. Hayden?
Councilmember O'Rourke, members of the City Council, we can formulate our upcoming budget. We're coming up to the mid-cycle budget review for the 2015-16 fiscal year. It's the second part of our two-year budget, so we will take some of this information into consideration as we formulate the proposed recommendations for council's consideration in the mid-cycle budget review.
Okay.
Specifically, the code-compliance on the weekend activities.
Thank you. Part of that, I'll just dovetail, that I had a friend that I played golf with, and he made a comment that he had a homeless person or somebody that was sleeping in his backyard, and he went outside, and the fellow took off, and the park rangers showed up on Monday then. And so it's kind of like, you know, we need a little more reaction time, I think, on weekends for, and there are a lot of other things that go on, but that particular hot button seemed to impress me, so.
Councilmember O'Rourke, members of the City Council, also, you bring up a good point with the park rangers. We've had a paradigm shift as far as our response for service is concerned, and no longer are our park rangers assigned to...
Parks.
Parks. We've changed the title to city rangers because we've expanded their level of jurisdiction away from just parks to actually the entire city of Santa Maria to help our police department and also our code enforcement officers as far as patrolling is concerned within the city. So that's why you'll see the changing of the vehicles from park rangers, now they're called city rangers.
Right. Thank you, Rick.
Any other comments from? I have questions. When some of these renovations are done, and they go out to bid, right? Is the lowest bid always taken?
For the city projects or the nonprofit facilities?
Nonprofit facilities.
The nonprofit facilities projects, the nonprofits are actually considered to be a subrecipient. So we require that they get at least three bids, and the way the HUD regulations are written, the cost needs to be reasonable, so it doesn't necessarily mean they have to take the lowest bid. You know, there may be a reason that they feel that the lowest bidder is not capable of doing the job. So... So it's up to them with our guidance who they select as their contractor, but they do have to get three bids. And then we have to, of course, determine that it's reasonable.
Well, you know, when we have bids and we have to select the lowest bid and they have to have, the specs are out there, so company A, B, and C will adhere to the specs, but we still have to receive the lowest bid. And I would submit that they should have to do that. Now, can we put that condition on these? Because this is taxpayer money that they're using.
Right. Right. The committee discussed that, and in particular, in the next round of funding, they're going to actually, they want to require that they submit the bids along with their application, at least three bids. Also, there was discussion about use of local contractors.
That was the next thing I was going to ask you.
Right. And they want to add that, we're going to add that as well.
I think that is imperative. I think there was.
So that would be a local, you know, policy.
Because there was, and I can't remember what it was, but someone out of Atascadero did the job. And I find that unacceptable. I think they need to be local and it needs to be the lowest bid. And you can have the specs there. You know, that's fine. But those were two concerns I had. And I will piggyback on what Mr. O'Rourke said here. And it was like, when did I, was it Monday I called you? Somebody had dumped, I don't know if they dumped a bunch of people, but they were dumping personal items of these people on Mill and Broadway out of a white van. And so this woman said they were just plastic bags and just dumping them there on the side. And there were several people there with bicycles and home, they appeared to be homeless with all their personal belongings. And I don't know where they came from. But anyway. And on the weekends, there's all kinds of things going on in town that, unless you're driving around looking for it, there's detailing of cars, and I don't know where the water is going on this. There's barbecues that aren't permitted. I mean, there's all kinds of things going on. So I would say, you know, we really do need this person, and if we can do it in the budget, that's fine. But I think this is really a top need for the city. Ms. Waterfield?
With your comments, I've got a couple of questions. Since this is my first process, my first time of going through this process, Bob requested something, and then Alice asked for a condition in regards to the CDBG money. And this is quite a bit of money that we're working with. So as a city council person or as a city council unit, when we request something and we ask the CDBG to do it, do we set it as a condition or do we set it as a requirement for this purpose? And the other question is, Bob said that the park ranger needed to be funded. Do we have the option of taking $30,000 out of somewhere and then reallocating it tonight? I don't know if you do that. I don't know what the process is. So I'm the rookie and I'm learning.
Councilmember Waterfield, members of the city councils, to address your concern, the CDBG advisory committee, they are giving priorities that have been set previously by previous city councils. They also take a look at the goals that the city council have set for the last two fiscal years as well, too. One of the priorities was to start shifting money towards city infrastructure and city facilities from a capital perspective. They take that in consideration when they go out and they do their assessments of all of their recipient agencies. And then they put together a comprehensive recommendation to city staff, which they transmit to the city council.
Correct. And that part, that part I do understand, Rick. I don't want you to, you know, repeat that. But when it comes to the actual voting of what we want done, do we have the option of changing some of that money to go someplace else, like Bob said, the $30,000 that is required for the safer weekends?
Periodically, that question comes up from the city councils. And historically, that's been brought up by the newer members of the city council that haven't gone through the process before. And we have always recommended that we go forward with the recommendations from the CDBG advisory committee. They are recommendations to the city council. So to answer your question, council always has the ability to change the final recommendations because it's advisory to the city council. However, the block grant advisory committee, they have spent many hours in preparation of coming up with the recommendations, and they've vented the process. And they've had very lengthy discussions amongst their staff during the committee meetings. And so this is like the best-laid plans that they could put forward for your consideration. In the past, when council has wanted to shift some of the money, it starts looking at a domino effect. Because then you're taking from one project and then you're putting it towards another project. And then that could create a domino effect with some other council members that would like to shift some money from one project then to another project. And so we have always recommended to try to stay with the establishment of what the advisory committee is recommending, with the caveat that if you would like staff to take a look at other funding sources to try to find ways of funding certain projects, we try to do that. Our hands sometimes are relatively tied.
Yeah, I understand.
Councilmember O'Rourke's recommendation of trying to look at code compliance as far as a way of funding a weekend code compliance officer, that was one of the priorities of the city council, is aesthetics and more proactive city council, or excuse me, code compliance activities in the city. So we, as a staff, know that that's a priority. And so we could try to address that through the budget process from that perspective. Because it's a general fund obligation, code compliance is by itself. Some of the other programs are more social services in nature, which has a tendency of being more from a county administrative process.
Okay. And what about the definition between recommended or requirement?
As far as?
As far as what Ms. Patino had suggested in regards to.
The bidding process.
The bidding process. And I know they're going to go with the local contractors, which is, she was spot-on with that, but I felt like it was kind of vague with the bidding process. So I just needed to understand that a little bit more.
I would have to defer that to staff as far as whether or not we can require a local bidding process and preference to local contractors, if that would be something in compliance with HUD requirements.
We can require that.
You know, there's probably some other things I would want to look at, and maybe this would, it would be a good time to say, let's have an agenda item. And, because I know we have changed things since I have been on the council. And so maybe some of those things, we need to come down and decide some of those particular things that we'd like to change, and maybe just make that an agenda item so we can go through some of this. Because Mr. Boyce and Ms. Zuniga may have other things that they are interested in doing. But anyway.
Well, I was going to suggest that this coming year, that we again have the joint meeting, so that we can come to a meeting of the minds with the CDGB group and the council and can get our priorities again. You know, we sit around and keep the same priorities, but we did indicate this last time that, you know, we thought that some of our capital projects needed to be addressed as well as, you know, there's just not enough money. And other communities, frankly, spend it all on themselves for projects. And I would never say that we should do that. But I think we probably should have a meeting, as we did last year, to kind of get everyone's input and give direction. And these are some very valid questions, I think, because it is taxpayers' money that's going out the door to whoever and whatever we're funding, quite frankly. We need to, and it's, that resource is getting smaller. And as Celeste said, and I've been around for a lot of years, you know, I remember when it was maybe 20 organizations or 18 that were asking, and now we've got 48 groups asking for, and the money is shrinking. It's not coming forth. So anyway, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Rourke. Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence regarding capital project funds?
I have none.
Okay. So I'd like to open up the public hearing regarding the capital project funds. There are no written correspondence.
Excuse me, I think there was one, it was the last one on public. There was someone who wanted to speak on both public services and capital.
Okay. Yeah, I was asking for the written, okay, and then speaking on, okay. So this request to speak, Ms. Linda Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers.
Ms. Cordero, could you, oh, could you come to the podium, please?
Thank you. On behalf of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Santa Maria Valley, I would just like to affirm our appreciation for the consideration of the capital project of renovating the kitchen at the Boys and Girls Club on railroad. It is long, long overdue. And as we are expanding our programs and reaching out to more of our youth, it is imperative that we have the facility and the ability to utilize that space on a variety of levels. So we really do appreciate that. And while it will not cover the entire cost, it puts us in a very good position to move forward to secure additional funding. I would just also comment about, you know, the recommendation versus requirement. And I believe, you know, having served on several nonprofit boards, there is always an effort to provide business to local folks for any kinds of projects or services that we are looking for. But sometimes that is not possible. And it could limit the bids that one might receive, and it may make it somewhat less competitive. So you would be in a position to have to pay more than if it were opened up otherwise. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back. I'd like to close the public hearing now regarding the capital project funds and bring the item back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to, so I'm in the right. Okay. I, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2015-33 to be adopted approving the capital development activities and allocations under the community development block grant for fiscal year 2015-16.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 2015-33. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continuing on now with the public service portion of this agenda, Ms. Crelo Hudson, please continue.
Okay. Under public services of the 31 applications received, the committee recommended funding allocations to 20 of those. There were five applicants who have, who are currently funded that were not recommended for funding in this round. And there were three new programs that were added. All of the recommended allocations fall under priority number one, with the exception of the Fighting Back and People Self-Help Housing Summer Enrichment Programs that fall under priority number two, youth development. Under, we've organized them by priority. So under priority number 1A, that addresses food, shelter, clothing, homelessness, critical needs, necessities of life, and crime victims. Nine agencies are recommended for funding, and their funding amounts represent 53% of the overall funding for public services. Under priority number 1B, this addresses special needs populations such as elderly, frail elderly, mentally, developmentally, physically disabled. Six agencies are recommended for funding, and that represents 26% of the funding for public services. Priority number 1C addresses activities for at-risk youth. This was a priority of city council a couple of years ago. This was added to the number one priority. And three agencies are recommended for funding, representing 11% of the overall funding. Then under priority number 2B, this is providing for youth development opportunities, and this is in addition to the at-risk youth that are funded under priority one. Two agencies are recommended for funding, representing 10% of the overall funding. So you have five programs that are youth programs that are being recommended for funding, which represents 21% of the overall funding. If you have any questions on this portion, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Any questions from the council? Gino, I have a question on the applications. Some of the applications have, let's see, under expenses, under expenses, and it'll ask how many employees, and some of them have answered it, and some of them, it's blank.
That was a new section under part C that we added, and that's correct. Unfortunately, some applicants did not complete that correctly. That was new. Staff is going to try and do a better job of explaining that at our pre-application workshop. It is a little bit difficult. We were asking for the organizational structure, for them to list all of their positions and the salary range for those positions, to try and get a better idea of what their overall administrative costs were, and also their structure. How many employees do they have working in the agency and et cetera? Some agencies, including the city, are very large. So for the city programs and projects, we ask them to just submit that information for their department. And we also have a few agencies that are very large. So I think we need, the committee will be looking at that, the whole application form, actually, for next round, and to see what changes they want to make to the application.
Well, many times when you're applying, like for a scholarship or anything, and you're, if you don't fill out that one line, it disqualifies you automatically. And I'm not asking that you do that, but I just think that's really important. I know that there was a part of the application that I had asked one of my representatives to make sure that we had, and then it was taken out. And I think this is something else that we need to discuss when we talk about the CDBG funds and other items on there. Because I think that we need to know how much the executive director is making and how much other people are making.
That was in part C.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I saw it all just lumped together in many of these, so that's why I was wondering.
Some of them did not fill that out properly.
Yeah. And that should disqualify them if they don't put that in there. That's my opinion.
They also reported, we also obtained information on all their financial statements, their 990 tax forms, and all their audit information. So the 990 tax form usually will also have information on their top management salaries.
But we didn't have that.
No, that was provided to each of the teams.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, but we didn't have that.
But it should have been in part C. It's just that they didn't fill it out properly.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just, I have a comment.
Sure.
You know, I have no objection to requesting or asking for executive director salaries. I think it's going to create some problems for the committee, because I don't think that we can just take a dollar amount of a salary and make a judgment about that. I think we need to look at the size of the agency, the number of programs of service that are provided. they're providing, the number of services they're providing, because executive directors typically are paid on, based on the size of their agency, the number of programs they have, the number of services they provide. So I'm concerned that because now we look like we're heading towards starting to ask for executive director salaries, that we're going to take that as some sort of baseline without some sort of, you know, consideration for the rest of it. So probably what we're going to need to do is develop some sort of formula, right, based on, you know, what their job titles are, just like in the city. I mean, you know, department heads make different amounts based on the years of service, you know, the size of their departments, you know, what their job descriptions are, and so, you know, it would be a concern to just say, well, based on their salary, that's, and what are we doing with that information? I mean, what is the evaluation of that, and how does that affect the committee's decision-making about funding?
I don't, I don't think it needs to reflect anything about the committee's decision. I just think it needs to be transparent. I think people ask for it out there, and this is taxpayer money, and the taxpayers need to know what they're paying for. It's real simple to me.
The other thing I guess I would ask is that, in the comments about, you know, the size of the, you know, you said, well, the city's really large. If the city's applying, you know, or we're funding the city, whatever we require for the nonprofits, right, we're going to require for the city as well, the information regarding salaries and everything, correct?
The city departments attempted to do that, but what we did was we had them do it for their specific department rather than
The whole agency.
The whole agency, which would have been a list of four or 500 positions, or whatever it would be.
Which would also apply to nonprofits, like if a nonprofit is applying for a program within their agency, then they would provide information regarding staff salaries within that program, and what services they're providing, right, not for the whole agency, just like the city.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
That is kind of an issue, I think that the advisory committee needs to, to look at that.
I have a question. We have a great youth population in our community, I don't, what, what percentage of that, do you remember? I mean, this came to us maybe two or three years ago. We have a large number of under 18.
Yes, yes.
And we're, and they are
I think it's 29%.
29% or something like that, yeah, I thought it was pretty large. And then we have an increasingly growing elder population, too, that we're seeing needs to be served here.
Are you profiling some of us?
Absolutely not, but, you know, I guess maybe when we start looking at the criteria from the council, I think that might be good to look at, because the, I know that we always have more requests than we have resources, but anyway, I think that's information we need when we're setting up our criteria.
I do want to address Councilmember Zuniga's comments. It is very difficult to compare one agency against the other, because in truth, all of our agencies are unique, and you cannot compare really one executive director with another.
Right.
Because they're all unique in the types of services, the, the programs. You have one agency that maybe only has one staff member, and they're only providing one simple service, and you have other agencies that, that are operating that own capital assets, that are operating, you know, multi, in the tri-county area, you know, it's going to be, it's very difficult to compare, because it's really apples and oranges.
And I understand that, and I think most of us sitting up here are involved enough in the community that we know, and these agencies that, that are out here are, are really good, and we know that.
Yeah, they're unique.
And, and those that haven't been good in the years have, have sort of fallen by the wayside, and, and the good ones have stayed here with us, so.
And I guess one point, and I kind of pushed this years ago, knowing the activity of locals on the boards, because I always look at that, because I know some of the, some of the boards that are providing services, or agencies are providing some services in town, don't have too many Santa Maria residents on their boards, and I guess from the standpoint, we're supporting an organization that should have representation from our community, and, you know, it's like Washington DC, I mean, they've got, I've got a lot of representation out there, but it doesn't do much here, other than, you know, I, I call long-distance or text somebody, so it, it's kind of important in my mind to have local representation, helping determine what that agency's priority is to support our community.
That might, that might be good to give to Mr. Hadson when we discuss this, and so that at least we can encourage, not eliminate them, but encourage them to have people that are local on their boards.
That's something the advisory committee has always looked at, and some of these larger agencies that aren't based in San Maria, they may have an advisory committee, you know, a local advisory committee, so that's also something that, you know.
Thank you.
You know, it's, it's interesting what you guys are talking about, because I work for a nonprofit, and I have applied for a grant, and everything we discussed here in regards to Board of Directors for that agency, to know who the Board of Directors are for the nonprofit that I work for, what the salaries are, what everything is, the money coming in, the money going out, you know, supplying the, the tax information, it's all required, and if you miss a question, boop, you're gone. I mean, they just throw you completely out of the process. So when, you know, when we are having a lot of applicants submitting for less money, I guess that's one way to make it more competitive, is to just make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and it just makes them more alert and aware of what's going on, because it's, my first grant was, it scared me to death, but I did okay on it.
Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence regarding public service funds?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I'd like to open up the public hearing regarding the public service funds. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak in favor or opposition of the public service fund recommendations?
We have 13.
13. 13 times three is what? I, I would just ask everyone to, you know, when they get up and speak, I'd like to give everyone the opportunity to speak, and everyone loves, would love to sit here till midnight, so if you could just be very concise when you come up to the podium. David Quelo, followed by Judy Monte, followed by Britt Stanley.
David Quelo, 607 West Main Street, Catholic Charities. Want to thank everybody here for your, particularly Grants Advisory Committee, Block Grants Advisory Committee for their hard work, and Celeste and Rosie for their excellent work, and for you, Mayor and, and council members, for your dedication to serving the, the people of Santa Maria. I want to let you know that it may look like Santa Maria is, is a prosperous community, but we've got a lot of people in need in this town, and this CDBG process has helped a number of these people to keep going and keep working, to stay in their homes, to keep their children bathed, and I want you to know that our, our highest priority at Catholic Charities is to try to help keep people from going homeless, and try to make sure that that water spigot is still working. It's difficult. Last year, 44 families were helped with water bills, but by no means is that enough help. And we, we have currently some funding through FEMA that we have to spend before June 30, and I want to see people apply for that, that funding if they're low income. I really don't want people to think, well, someone else needs it more than I do. I hear that comment so often, and yes, if you need the help, please apply. I'm mentioning this to Santa Maria residents, but Orket also is, is in that bidding, Guadalupe. But people in Santa Maria, I mean, yes, everybody here in Santa Maria is hardworking and wants to, to do well for themselves, but if you need the help, call Catholic Charities at 922-2059. We have FEMA money right now to spend on helping your children bathe, and if you need help with rent, we have rental assistance. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Quelo, and thank you for the great job you do in our community. Ms. Monte.
Oh, good evening all, and I'll spare the listing. So thankful for City of Santa Maria's support, and I'll, I will ditto the staff, and I don't want your job. Remind me of that if I ever apply. Incredible, incredible job, they do their diligence, the good questions they ask when they do site visits, they don't get enough thanks. I want to thank you for your continued support of the food bank and the continued high priority. This last year, we did see increase in the number served. I know many of you are painfully aware of the drought, to let you know how that's impacted the food bank. The food that comes to us from the local growers is typically seconds that can't go to market, but in the drought conditions, a lot of what would have come as donations to us are going to market in agencies, Central Valley and other agencies that are hard-hit. They're happy to have the seconds this year. It means we're buying more food, and it also means because of supply and demand, the cost of purchasing that food is higher. So your, your, your contribution, your partnership with us this year is really vital. I'm going to leave with staff for you guys. Picture, health, Hunger in America Study done by Feeding America in 2014, specifically to Santa Barbara County. You talked about the priority for youth, and I know they're number two, but I think David Quelo would echo for me. One out of every five children in Santa Barbara County in poverty, 20%, 36% of the people receiving food from the food bank were children. A well-nourished child impacts their education, their social development, et cetera, et cetera. So while it may not be quite as clear and plain, a lot of the people that are falling under category one are also category two people. If that helps you at all with what's being spent on the youth, a lot of what's going to the food bank is going directly to those under the age of seven, of 18. I want to save any further comments on statistics, because I want to relay a story to you. We have a, a large Saturday distribution done by one of the local churches. They relayed a story to me of two women that frequent that service in this year. One of them needed caregiving but couldn't afford it because her income was so limited. The other woman had become unemployed and needed support because of the unemployment state. The first woman who needed caregiving, she, she had her home, and she said, I'm going to give back what I have, and so she opened her home to the woman who was unemployed to live rent-free. What she didn't know when she made the offer was she was opening the door to have her own need met, because that woman's profession was a caregiver, and they were able to exchange caregiving and rent. And so the food that we distribute is not just meeting the, filling bellies to begin with, but it's creating an impact of people, not a handout, but a hand-up.
Thank you very much, Ms. Monte. Britt Stanley, followed by Sandy. Okay, followed by Sarah Rudd, okay.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, my name's Britt Stanley. I am with the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. I am the North County Program Manager for the Teen Court Program. I want to thank you and the dedicated Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee for their hard work. They performed in determining the fiscal year 15-16 allocations. Teen Court continues to help the youth of Santa Maria make better choices and understand the impact those choices are having on themselves and their families. In 2014, 85% of our clients who came to, into our peer review program, which where they are given consequences by other youth, completed successfully. The latest report from the probation department shows our recidivism, which a minor allegedly commits either a new misdemeanor or felony, was only 6.5% county-wide. Last year, CADA has brought back the Friday Night Live Club Live program, which invites junior and senior high school students to develop leadership skills and live a drug and alcohol-free lifestyle through alternative activities and involvement in their community. Teen Court is also the mechanism to refer youth to our new Cannabis Youth Treatment Program, or CYT, which is an 11-week brief intervention, which includes individual, group, and family sessions with our counselor. To date, CYT has an 86% successful completion rate, which is above the national average. We're hearing great things from our clients, such as, thank you for believing in me, I can see how much better my life is now that I don't get high, I can, I am thinking about my future for the first time in my life. One of our graduate, or one of our clients is even considering joining the military or the police academy. The change is not only occurring with them, but in changing their family relationships, their progress in school, they're even informing their friends about the dangers of using drugs and alcohol. One client told us, I'm the cop with all my friends, because now I tell them it's bad for them. One client in particular is a 14-year-old young man, eighth grader from Ariana's Junior High School, who is always finding himself in the middle of trouble when it comes to that stuff. In his last educational class, he wrote us a thank you letter. We did not ask him for it, not part of his contract, he just did it. Dear Teen Court, your program and classes have showed me that drugs can ruin your life and the way my body works. Thank you for helping me realize that I have a second chance to turn my life around and do better things. I know I have changed the way I used to think and the way I used to talk, and it's all because of your belief in me that I can change. I know this is not a lot, but I still wanted to say thank you for everything you did for me. This is how you're helping us impact the lives of our teens. Finally, the Friday Night Live Club Live is doing our committed campaign at Pioneer Valley, Santa Maria High School, Delta, and Ariana's this week, asking youth to commit to drug and alcohol-free lifestyles, and they will receive a wristband if they do that, one of these. I would like you and your city staff who are present to have one, and anyone in the audience who would like to be committed and support this, you are welcome to one as well. Thank you for your continued support, providing us an opportunity to impact the lives of the youth in our community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stanley. Sandy, followed by Sarah Rudd, followed by Jenny Morales.
Madam Mayor, Honorable City Council Members, good evening. My name is Sandy Delos, and I'm here representing Domestic Violence Solutions for Santa Barbara County. Our executive director, Charles Anderson, sends his regrets, but he was unable to be here tonight. On behalf of Charles, our Board of Directors, volunteers, and everyone who works for DVS, we would like to thank the staff and membership of the Block Grants Advisory Committee for helping us achieve this year's Public Service Award. This allocation work is very difficult and heartbreaking, and your people have given generously of themselves and their time. We'd like to spend, to send a special thanks to Rosie Nares, who is always quick to answer questions, respond to an email, and guide us with clear information whenever we needed it. She did a special favor for me, even though I know she was very busy. She is terrific staff. These funds are so important. Not only are they vital to continue providing safety for women and children fleeing violence in their homes, but they also serve a very important role in helping us leverage other resources so that we can build a strong public-private partnership. Everyone in this room is part of a vigorous and creative community team, and DVS is proud to work with all of you. Most of all, on behalf of the women and children who come to us for safety and a better way of life, we want to let you know how grateful we are to be a part of this beautiful and caring city. Thank you all once again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah Rudd, followed by Jenny Morales, followed by Linda Cordero again.
Hello, I'm Sarah Rudd Lawler. I'm the Program Manager for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Santa Barbara County, and I, we are a program, a family service agency. We're incredibly grateful for the advisory committee and staff for the hard work around the CDBG funding here, and we're grateful to the City Council and Mayor Patino for your thoughtful consideration of funding our vital programs. As you know, Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentoring programs are a valuable community resource that speak to multiple city priorities, including supporting at-risk youth. We're a relevant solution to addressing school attendance, graduation rates, higher education, delinquency, and workforce development. delinquency, and workforce development, and we're proud to strengthen the community through this work. I want to tell you about one young lady, Little Sister Maria. She came to us about two years ago. Her mom decided to bring her to us. She was a single mother of three children. One of her daughters had diabetes. She brought her eldest daughter, Maria, to us, and then her middle daughter, or excuse me, her youngest daughter, was struggling with leukemia. So needless to say, while other kids were out doing homework, playing sports, Maria was at home helping her family to care for the other children with diabetes and leukemia. She was really struggling with schools, the pressure of having a low-income parent that works multiple jobs while dealing with all of these other pressures. And she began to really struggle. She was failing in school, she had been diagnosed with depression, and she had almost no friends. We matched her with Big Sister Simone, and within a year and a half, their strong connection helped Maria to focus in school, have more one-on-one time away from the family struggles. And Mom gratefully credits the program for Maria's increased confidence, better grades, and increased happiness. Maria and her Big Sister Simone are excited to be taking a California tour to look at colleges this year. Thank you so much again for the recommended funding and for considering the Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentoring program. Because of your help, we're able to reach more children in Santa Barbara County and particularly right here in Santa Maria through potentially professionally-supported, one-to-one mentoring relationships. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rudd. Jenny Morales, followed by Linda Cordero, followed by Fran Forman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council Members, and everybody in this room. My name is Jenny Morales. I work for the Independent Living Resource Center, and I run their Communications Assistance Program. In other words, I'm a sign language interpreter, so I work specifically with deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals. We focus, well, my program focuses specifically on deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals. And as I sit back in this room tonight and I hear all these wonderful services that other agencies provide, I do want to mention that we are the only agency that actually provides this type of quote-unquote "communication access" for deaf individuals and hard-of-hearing individuals. So when the deaf or hard-of-hearing individual needs to obtain some type of service, whether throughout our community, they also face a communication barrier, and that's where our agency steps in. We are truly the one and only agency that does provide this wonderful service. And disabilities come actually in every, you know, age, whether it be youth or elderly, every race, you know, ethnicity, whatever you want to call it. But we never really think about or really focus about individuals with disabilities, and that's where our agency steps in. We have worked primarily, we work with Red Cross. Recently, there was just a fire over at some apartment units where there was thirty individuals that needed to be evacuated, and two of those were deaf individuals, and we stepped in and provided those interpreting services so they were able to, again, receive the services that they needed. So I'm just here to, A, thank you so much for considering the funding that we are requesting for. We have noticed that every year, our services are very much more in need, whether we provide advocacy for those parents who have children with disabilities, or their parents themselves who want to be able to, you know, access services for their children. They actually have no other agency that provides this type of service to them. So I thank you so much for, you know, considering our funding request, and I think that we do operate in a wonderful city. I think that we offer tremendous services, but we never really sit back and think about, okay, you know, how can we provide these services to individuals with disabilities, especially those that are deaf and hard-of-hearing? There is no other, you know, agency out there that can provide that for them. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Linda Cordero, followed by Fran Forman, followed by Karen Dominguez.
Good evening once again. I am wearing my hat this time for the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, and just want to extend our sincere appreciation to the council and to the very hard-working CDBG committee members who do such a thorough job of interviewing and checking on all of the information that is part of the application. For us to continue to be considered for funding is very, very much appreciated. While we serve survivors of rape, we also provide classroom lessons in first, fourth, and seventh grade, and sometimes in high school regarding personal safety. And it just, education, of course, is dear to my heart, and to be able to continue to provide those services as our community grows is just extremely important. So thank you very much.
And thank you for all you do in our community, Linda. Fran Forman, followed by Karen Dominguez, followed by Jane Hood.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Ms. Forman.
My name is Fran Forman, and I'm the Executive Director for the Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County. I'm here tonight because I'm very disappointed that CAC was not designated for funding to provide healthy lunches to seniors. CAC serves three hundred and fifty seniors, either in one of three centers located in Santa Maria or in their home. A hundred and fifty seniors receive a meal each day in their home. The seniors in their homes are vulnerable and frail and not able to come to a center. Because we are strictly donation-based, no one that's qualified is turned away, we are the true safety net for seniors in Santa Maria. The funding was not for extra meals, but for actual costs of the program. CAC must raise money annually to operate this program. Please note that we only submit one application for your consideration each year. We depend upon local support to operate this program. The assumption is made that we raise two-thirds of the operating costs for that program. Santa Maria is the only city that will not be supporting this program. This is a hardship for our agency and our ability to provide basic services. In most cases, our driver is the only person that the senior sees each day. The people we serve have worked their entire life, raised their families, followed the rules. They need all of our collective efforts to live a life of dignity. We are disappointed that this was not recognized through the funding. In closing, it's not too late to support us. We are always fundraising for this program. We know we have the support of many City Council Members who are coming to our Champions Dinner on May 7th. If you would like to personally support our efforts, I invite you to come to the dinner. Three community people are being honored, one of them from Santa Maria, Mrs. Francesca Shepherd, who has dedicated her time and resources toward making Santa Maria a better community, and especially for seniors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Forman. Karen Dominguez, followed by Jane Hood, followed by Jose Aguilera.
Hello, I'm Karen Dominguez, and I was born and raised here in Santa Maria, and I work for Santa Maria Benita School District. And I've been on the CAC board for five years. And I'm also disappointed that CAC's Healthy Senior Lunch was not recommended for the CDBG funding. It's important that the city supports the most vulnerable people in our community, and the Healthy Senior Lunch clients are very low-income. Most are living on less than sixteen thousand per year, and CAC doesn't charge a fee. And if the seniors donate, they do donate, some of them, and that comes out to about seventy-six cents per meal. Many of the seniors report that they choose, if they don't have those meals, they would have to choose between eating and paying rent or buying medication. And what we choose to put our money behind says what we think is important. And I really, I know that we feel our elderly are really important. I know we do, you know, I know we do. And I wanted to share one more thing. This was a letter that came to CAC, and they read it to us, and they actually put it in their report, and it says, "Dear CAC Mobile Meals," and it came from a senior. "I wish to thank you for all of your compassion, product, and diligence in seeing that I am able to eat a balanced meal each day. My doctor is thrilled at my progress in eating a nourishing and healthy diet. This program is the most essential and important program I have ever been involved with, and it has gone the distance in keeping me alive for six full months or more now, before I went hungry every week from lack of food because of my extremely low Social Security income, nine hundred monthly. I will be forever grateful to you for all the wonderful work you provide for disabled senior citizens. Vince is wonderful. Thank you, and may God bless you." So it's just really important, and I want to thank you guys. I know this is a really hard job, so thank you very much. And thank you to all, so we are disappointed, but I know it's a really hard job, so thank you.
And thank you too, Karen, for all you do in our community. Jane Hood, followed by Jose Aguilera, followed by Debbie Johnson.
Mayor and City Council, I'm here to tell you a little bit about the CAC, which a lot of people see on the side of the trucks, stands for Community Action Commissions. And I eat at the Union Plaza, Monday through Friday, for lunch, which is really more like a supper or a dinner. And for those of you that don't know the city real well, it's on the corner of Broadway and Main, and it's the only seven-story building that we have. And it's also used by the Fire Department for practice, so don't think they're always having fires there when you drive by. Or some of them are pretty good-looking, too. And the more I see them, the older I feel. As you can tell, I represent, the Union Plaza is for seniors and handicapped. I'm both, mentally handicapped and I'm a senior. Okay, there are seven establishments for the CAC. There's one way up the mountain in Lompoc, and then there's one in Guadalupe, and then there's one at the Muscle Center, which sometimes isn't called the Muscle Center anymore because it's owned by the--
Mrs. Hood, Mrs. Hood, I have to have you speak into the microphones so we can all hear you.
Okay, sometimes the Muscle Center is not known as Muscle Center because the city has taken it over. Okay, then after there, there's the Union Plaza and Atkinson's, but some people call it the Railroad. And then there's one in Guadalupe. So those are all of the places where they can have meals. The people that put the meals up not only have to pay for the meals when they fix them, they have to pay salaries for quite a few people. There's the drivers, the servers, the cooks, and the food is always cooked for people with dietary problems. So some people carry their own salt and pepper in their purse and so on and so on. But the meals are very good. My son says I can't even boil spaghetti. So if I wasn't eating there, I'd be having peanut butter at home, talking to my cat. So I love to go there to see the people and to eat the food. Okay, it's, I want to make sure I didn't leave any of those cities out. I didn't. We are never actually charged money, but they have a donation. And that's just about everything that I can tell you. Thank you.
I want to thank you very much for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Jose Aguilera, followed by Debbie Johnson.
Hello, my name is Jose Aguilera, and I'm a resident of Santa Maria for more than twenty years. And I'll give you thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Community Action Commission. They are in charge of taking lunches to the seniors and disableds of Santa Maria. And I would like to, you know, kind of make an appeal if I can. Please continue to fund these programs, these food programs, because they serve not only for the nutrients of the bodies of many elderly people and disabled, but they serve also as a form of socializing of these programs. Because, you know, in spite of their ailments and their sicknesses, they go down there to have lunch and say hello to other people, which make their life more bearable. So that's all I can say. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilera.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Debbie Johnson, followed by Bill Pike.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. I'm here to talk about the senior and lunch programs with the Community Action Commission. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I eat the lunch every day with the Senior Action Commission program, and I'm very low-income and allows me to eat every day and have a hot meal. And I would like to say that many people who come to our center, they're asked to make a donation, and some people, I try to contribute what I can to the lunch program. And there are, I would also like you to know that many people that come are not able to make a donation because their income is so limited. But the Community Action Commission works with us so that we can have a hot meal every We and the residents in the community would like to let you know that we wish that you would support this program. It's a vital program for our community, and it prevents many people from going hungry. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Bill Pike.
I'm Bill Pike, and I eat at the Muscle Center five days a week, and it's really a great program they have. It's a good, adequate meal. Doesn't cost too much, and I think it's just a great program, and you should continue with it. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Man, a few words, we got the message. I would like to give out the phone number again that Mr. Quayle gave for Catholic Charities, 922-2059. I'd like to close the public hearing regarding the public service funds and bring the side and back to the council for discussion or a motion. Discussion. I want to hear something. Go ahead.
Well, I have to say how moved I was by, you know, everybody who spoke, and especially the seniors who came and talked about the benefit of the food program, the meal program, not only for them just to have a nutritious meal, but for the socializing it does for them, the opportunity it has for them to get out, and certainly, as Ms. Forman shared with us, for those who are shut in and don't have oftentimes people to check on them, this is, you know, at least somebody to be able to check on them and know that they're okay or if they need help. So, you know, it's heartbreaking that, you know, as City Manager Hayden said, we don't, well, we could, we don't really have a policy where we make changes, but it's very, it feels just kind of shameful to have these people come before us and that we're not going to feed them, we're not going to give them socializing activities, and we're not going to be checking on them on a daily basis. So is there more discussion, or I'll make a motion?
You can make a motion. You can discuss or make a motion. It's up to you, whatever you want to do.
Well, I was just going to make a couple of comments. It's, you know, it's gut--
It's, you know, it's gut-wrenching being up here, but it's even more so at that end of the table where the committee has to digest all of the information, spend all the time and energy. And I would say, the others that were not funded probably would fill this room. And they're all so deserving as the ones that just spoke. But I guess when we get to changing or trying to change the formula of the people that we've entrusted to bring the recommendations to us, that's a little tough because they do the groundwork and the legwork and all the other stuff, and we certainly read and go through the binders, and we know there's so much need. And if we could take this $199,000, if you could entrust me, I'll go to Las Vegas and we'll try and double it. Or something else happens. So anyway, I just want to thank the folks that do so much for our community that are all out there, and then also from the people that we've appointed to task that. And I know there are some people have dropped out of the committee because it is gut-wrenching. It's just, it's emotionally tough to make the recommendations and pass it on, and then we try to fulfill with the funds that we have the programs that they've suggested that are the biggest bang for our buck, I guess I'd say.
Ms. Waterfield.
And I need to echo both of my colleagues' comments, and I know that for the committee sitting where you're sitting right now and to listen to the comments, it has to be gut-wrenching. And I look at the seniors, and you built America. You built what Santa Maria is. And it's tough. Oh my gosh, it's just really tough to sit here and to listen and to just, to hear what you have to say. I want to thank you for your service to America. I want to thank you, everything that you've done. And then I would just ask that, you know, I'm learning the process, but I guarantee you that I will keep CAC in the front of me. I know we do a lot for our youth, but we need to bring our seniors forward because you provided and built a pathway for what the assets that our youth get today, and we need to reward you. We truly do. And thank you, committee. I thank you so much for your extreme hard work.
I would really like to thank all the committee. I know it's really, really tough, and you just, you go through everything and listen to everyone, and you're checking everything out. And I'm really glad, because we don't have to do it, because it's all on you. And it's a tough job. And I certainly appreciate what you do, because this makes Santa Maria a better city for all that you do. And I totally, you know, and I see all your faces, you're, all of you are involved in the things. This is not the only thing you do. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you doesn't seem enough, but thank you. And I want to say Karen Cordery, who's on your committee, should be, she said she'd be home watching tonight, so let's see if she is.
Karen.
Anyway. Do I have a motion here?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2015-34 to be adopted, approving the public service activities and allocations under the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year 2015-16.
I'll second. It's been moved and second to adopt Resolution 2015-34. Excuse me, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmembers, Zuniga.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye.
We have one more public hearing item. Oh, I guess we should wait for Mr. Boyson.
Oh, yeah.
Or did he?
No, he'll be back.
Did he follow--
He's in Rick's office.
Okay.
He's watching.
Okay.
He's watching on television.
So when he comes--
Maybe he's watching basketball.
When he comes out, you can read the title.
Two minutes. Two minutes?
No, he doesn't need two minutes.
Okay. Here he comes. Okay.
He didn't fall asleep.
Watching Golf Channel?
Yes, he didn't fall asleep.
Well, he's not watching the Golf Channel, there's basketball on him. Cycling, Perry Roubaix. That was last weekend, wasn't it?
Tell me whenever you're ready. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing to hear protest against the abatement of public nuisances for such, such as noxious and dangerous weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt. And if no majority protest exists, authority or authorize the Director of Public Works to perform abatement of the nuisances from the public and unimproved private lots.
Staff report is to be made by Director of Public Works, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. This is a public hearing for the 2015 Weed Abatement Program. Each year, the Public Works Department inspects undeveloped lots in the city of Santa Maria for excessive weeds and refuse. These can be a fire or a health hazard. This year, we found 253 lots contained excessive weeds and refuse. On April 24th, the City Council directed staff to notify the property owners to provide appropriate maintenance on these lots. The property owners can return the notice telling the department they intend to remove the weeds or refuse from their, on their own. Weeds and refuse on the lots that are not removed by the property owners would be removed by the contractor of the city. The property owner is then charged for the service on their property tax bill. Last year, the Public Works Department abated 13 lots at a total cost of $1,815.95. This ends the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? It sounds like we've got 13 more lots than we did, we did last, last year.
That's correct.
Obviously, they want us to just take care of them. Wouldn't this be a revenue enhancement stream here?
This is actually not 13 more lots that we're taking care of. This is merely 13 more lots that we've posted.
Oh, okay.
So then we go back after the posting and after the return of the notices--
Okay.
--and see if they've been cleaned up or not.
Okay, so then I, I'm sorry, I read it wrong then. I was--
Yeah, we don't know how many lots we're going to clean yet.
Okay, so this is 13 more lots than the quantity of lots that were addressed in 2014?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or in opposition?
We have no requests to speak at all.
Okay. So I'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the council.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2015-35.
Second.
It's been moved, second to approve Resolution 2015-35. Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye.
The next item will be a report by the City Manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the City Council. Your next meeting will be two weeks from this evening, the 5th of May, May 5th. And we will have proclamation night. We have five proclamations to be presented that evening. The Water Awareness Month, Compost Awareness Month, the National Police Week, Police Officers' Memorial Day, Bike to Work Week, and then also Go Western Days. So a reminder to council and to staff, we will be wearing Western apparel at the next City Council meeting. We have a number of consent agenda items to be talking about. Los Alamos Library Lease will be before the City Council, along with an agreement with Santa Barbara County for the operation of the TBRA program. We will be having the second reading of the water sewer rate increase that we talked about, and we passed the first reading this evening. Then we will have one regular business item, and that will be the third-quarter financial report. So we will also log in for next spring to bring back for future consideration. Actually, it'll probably be in the fall, and that would be a future agenda item for a joint block grant advisory committee and City Council meeting pursuant to council's request this evening.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden.